Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Is there a party here or something? I don't know. Beautiful day today. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Marion Bory.
Here.
Mark Bichard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
All right. Before we get going, I'd like to amend the agenda. It would be 1O. And it would be to allocate ARPA.
It's going to be 1P.
A 1P? Do we have an O?
Yeah, we have an O.
Huh?
We have an O that says property transfer.
That's supposed to be over there, and then P is the next one.
Oh, I got it. The 1P. For allocation of ARPA funds, and I'll explain that when we get to it. That's my motion. Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
We usually have a meeting about that, and I, you know, we didn't do that.
We'll talk about it as a discussion.
No, I'm not up to adding that to the agenda.
Okay, well, you can vote no.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we got motion and support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. Next, we have bills payable. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $231,142.75.
Support. All right, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Harry Nun, roll call, please.
Marion Bory. Yes. Mark Bichard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we're moving right along to the supervisor's report. Usually, I report on everything that happened the past couple of weeks, but today, I'm basically going to give you an update on open items in the township and things I wanted to get done in the next year. Thing's going to happen real soon. We have a sewer interceptor lining project, and that's in conjunction with IRA. That construction's going to start in January sometime, and it also comes with a $1 million EPA grant that we have for. Then we have another sewer collection system project to line our sewer collection system, and all the pre-construction bids are in place for that. And it went out for bid, and it'd be up for the new board to accept it or not, but that's waiting. Yeah, water replacement projects, Phase 1 and 2. All the pre-construction bids are in place for that. It's ready to go out for bids, and so that can be started real quick. And same with Phase 2 on that. Phase 1, we got $2.5 million from the EPA to help with that construction, and Phase 2, we have almost $1 million for that. And that can be pulled the trigger on that any time. We have Fayette View Shores Bridge Replacement. It's on our agenda tonight. We have $100,000 right now to be funded. And also, I'd be thinking about, real soon, replacing the large culvert at Riverside Drive. Also, the last bridge on Anchor Bay Drive. Then at Harrison's Island, there's a large culvert, Crispin Road. I actually got in a boat and went under it. And that culvert has about 70% metal loss, so that's not going to be very long, so I would be making plans on replacing that very soon. And also, there's work that needs to be done on the Mayberry Bridge. Also, on Harrison's Island, this wastewater treatment plant. We've secured $2 million to build the plant, and we ordered what we could order for the stuff inside the plant that we could, because it takes like a nine-month wait on some of this stuff. So we already ordered a lot of that. There's a little bit more of the headworks and a little bit at the end that needs to be ordered. But we have $2 million that will pay, in theory, will pay for that and to connect the town. The rest of the collection system is going to take about $2.25 million, around in there. We had an earmark in the House Appropriations for that. That was pulled in August, and I was told we got to work directly with the EPA to get those funds, so you'll be working with the EPA to secure those funds. And also, I was working with DTE to give us funding and a grant to about $350,000 to pay for the solar aspect of that project. You know, the solar panels, the batteries and whatnot, so we can collect carbon credits. They were very, very much in tune with that. And also, with that project, you're going to have to manage the existing MEDC grant. On M-154 over there, they wanted to pave it, that road, with chip seals, and it would be the only chip-sealed paved state road in the whole state. I said, "No, that's not good enough." So, talking with MDOT, we put it off for two years. They gave us a $2 million upgrade for that project, and when it's paved, it should be paved with asphalt. Let's see. We're looking at paving Falkirk Road next, and I'd love to lower the speed limits on that road, but yeah, we don't have that power. There is a well-funded, just got funded, Safe Roads to School Grant that will pay for a sidewalk on Falkirk and Fruit. So, I know I would be working on that. I would suggest the new board be working on that. Safe Roads to School Grant. We have to secure the Harrison's Island mini-pumper that's ordered and have to push the DDA bill allowing a second DDA if you're separated by a body of water, basically so we could have a second DDA in San Soucy. I'm not sure if that's going to be pushed through at the state level through lame duck session or not. Be nice if it did. And just a suggestion, how that DDA should be, I think how it should be, who should be on the board? You have nine members. I do two residents, two board members, I mean, sorry, two residents, two business owners, a Harrison's Island Lions member, a SS Downtown member, a Harrison's Island Museum member, and one from the Harrison's Island St. Clair Flats Association. That would be a nice breakup, a split on a new DDA board. Usually, DDA boards, they have to have some kind of vested interest within the district. Harrison's Island Nature Park with handicap kayak launch and a public bathroom. We're waiting on the DNR Development Grant for $400,000 to build that. I have, I did receive our score. It's 270, and it's a very good score for that grant. It'll be, if we get it funded or not, it'll be a function of how much money they, the DNR Trust Fund, they capture money from sales of energy in Michigan, of natural gas and oil and things like that. And that's how, a portion of that goes into the DNR Trust Fund, and that's how it gets funded. So it's going to be a function of that and who all applied. If it doesn't get funded, I'd submit the same application next year. Still working with the state to extend broadband connectivity on Marl Road, Starville, parts of Holland. And I hope that we still aggressively attack Frag Mities. I was working with the DNR and the Eagle. I had them, I asked in the state budget if the state would buy us a Frag Marshmaster. They said, "Artie has such a great idea, we're buying two of them," but they're going to the DNR. But the problem is, the DNR has no labor resource to operate it, and I've been talking to them. So I was trying to work out an operating agreement between the DNR, Eagle, and Clay Township so we could operate it ourselves and try to put, help out the, or fight the Frag Mities, specifically St. John's, Marcella, Algenack State Park, and everywhere you look on Harrison's Island. We have the community garden still up and running in good shape, and eventually, I'd like to see a farmer's market there and maybe even a small business incubator. And we're about to install a culvert on Halleen, and the DDA supplied wood to build raised flower beds for that project, so they have raised flower beds in the spring. Let's see. And we've been doing work with St. Clair County Parks and Rec on the North Channel Park that they're building, and we've been always doing a lot of work with Sturgis for Tomorrow, our local schools, Boat Ride for Vets, the Blessing Boxes, our two museums, libraries, and Goodfellas and other service groups. And I just want to personally say, it's been a great pleasure to serve Clay Township and allow me a supervisor of this township. The past 12 years, I believe this board has improved our relationships with our neighbors, school, county, state, and federal governments, took steps to help our environment, start our Parks and Rec. When we first got in, I first got in, there was no Parks and Rec. It was just not here. Started a new Parks and Rec Department, increased pride in our community. I want to personally thank all our community, all our employees. Without you, it couldn't have done the job, so thank you, employees. That's my supervisor's report. Okay. Public comments? Do we have any public comments?
I have one.
I just want to make sure that the board all saw this letter from Paul Cassidy, who's our future-elect supervisor, and the public to know. So I'm just going to read it. "Board members and officials, I've had the opportunity to review the agenda for tonight's Clay meeting. As supervisor-elect, I have some concerns which I raise with you now in this correspondence. Both present and future board members have a duty to ethically and legally transfer governmental power from an outgoing board to an incoming board. I am sure you will all agree with me that it is in Clay Township's best interests that such a transfer be achieved legally and ethically and free from even the appearance of impropriety. As a general rule, an outgoing board does not have the authority to bind a future board to any individual employees or appointees, especially past the outgoing board's term. Additionally, it is unlawful for a lame duck board to reduce or increase in any amount the compensation of incoming elected officials and board members. More importantly, if taken by an outgoing board, such actions indeed convey to the public an appearance of impropriety. I respectfully request that the outgoing board refrain from agreeing to the appointment or reappointment to any public, quasi-public body of any individual whose term will run past the term of this board. The same is true for any change in the compensation, whether increased, decreased, for any appointee or employee. As for Agenda Item 1J, I strongly recommend that a lame duck transfer of nearly $15,000 from Clay Township to another governmental entity is inappropriate. Your published agenda does not provide any legitimate explanation as to why such money needs to be transferred at this late date in this board's current term. Perhaps such a transfer by the future board would be appropriate, but that should be a decision for the future board." Michigan law makes it clear with an outgoing board, and Michigan does not have the authority to bind a future board to any individual employees, and there's a lot of lawful blah, blah, blah. So furthermore, actions taken by an outgoing board that attempt to bind future boards can convey an appearance of impropriety. In summary, an outgoing board in Michigan lacks the authority to bind future boards to individual employees or appointees, and it is unlawful for them to alter the compensation. Such actions will, again, convey an appearance of impropriety, undermining public trust in the governance process." So I just want to make sure.
Who was that sent to? I didn't get it.
It's sent to everyone on the board.
Did you guys get it?
By Paul Cassidy.
Yeah, I got it. I made a copy of it. I didn't get it. Any other public comments, please?
He is not well tonight, he.
I didn't get it.
Oh, he sent it to you.
I'm Shannon Cody, 2985 Fruit Street. Don't know if I have to say that or not tonight. I have to say that in the last too many months, I've seen a lot of disinformation, a lot of support, a lot of good things, a lot of bad things. But the takeaway for me is this room. I've been to many board meetings, and there's never, I don't think there's this many in a total of a year that attend. So I just hope, as a community, we continue this support. We have to respect those that are newly elected officials, right, wrong, or indifferent. They deserve our respect. Myself, I know that I have lots of questions all the time, and I call any one of these people and ask the questions, and they give me the information, and I think that's something we all need to take forward, is don't listen to social media, don't listen to any, what your friends say, your neighbors say. Call and ask the people that can give you an appropriate and true answer. And I truly thank every one of you that are staying on, moving on, because I know that I'm an outsider, but the last 18 years, this community has kept me here instead of going home to Maine, because it's a wonderful, amazing community, and I think that we can maybe grow more and do more with all of this support, and that it doesn't just all fall to the wayside. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Dennis?
Hello, everybody. Dennis Schmansky, 5194 Middle Channel. I'm wearing a couple different hats tonight. One I'm going to start with, I represent the Harrison's Island St. Clair Flats Association, and I just wanted to say thank you. I told Artie on Saturday, thank you all for getting the playscape over to the Harrison's Island Browns Field. We had it installed the last couple of weekends. We've been working on getting the mulch and the barrier and whatnot in completed, so we're like 98% completed, and I just want to say thank you, guys, for coming through on that and for the repairs and the install and whatnot. And then, I'm here also with the Harrison's Island Lions this evening, and I saw the last item on the agenda is the property transfer to Harrison's Island. I don't know if that's the same one that we sent over a few months ago or not, but if it's the same one, I would say thank you again. Now, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
Jerry Galca, 9996 River Road, Clay, Michigan. Is saving Clay Township the true objective of this outgoing board? The recent election yielded clear victory for the newly elected officials, and in line with their promise of transparency, the community deserves to be kept informed about ongoing transition. If you have any concerns or frustration regarding the current situation, now is the ideal time to speak up. Actions speak volumes. As you reviewed the agenda for tonight's meeting, it appears that the outgoing board is attempting to curtail the new board's authority and make decisions that could appropriately belong to them. For instance, Artie has positioned himself on the DDA to manage fund allocations. They are proposing to redirect approximately $15,000 from our Music in the Park budget to Algenack, and they are looking to approve expenditures exceeding $500,000 of taxpayer money, among other matters. We have reached out multiple times via email for clarification on these issues, yet we have received, have not received any responses. This troubling trend continued for the past 12 years under Supervisor Bryson, who's effectively appointed nearly every position in Clay, along with pressuring businesses that oppose his agenda and conflicts of interest related to his family owning the ferry to Harrison's Island. Artie, it may be wise for you to take a step back from public service, and I strongly recommend that the board postpone all new business tonight until the new board is in place. Also, it's understanding that St. Clair Flats, it was said that, Artie said that we did not reach out to anybody. I have an email here dated November 12th where I reached out to the Deputy Treasurer to have lunch and go over things, and she couldn't do it because she said she was busy. So, Artie, before you say things that nobody reached out to anybody, I did reach out. Thank you.
I think I said no one reached out to me. But thank you. Thank you.
Artie, let me, you did a thing on Face or on Nextdoor that said Marine couldn't, shouldn't be contacting you because he's not the supervisor. I contacted my deputy. I shouldn't have had contact you for anything.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
My name is Sandy Licarish. I live at 7300 Flamengo, and I'd like to know, why, Artie, are you appointing yourself, requested through Cindy Valentine, to appoint yourself to the DDA? I think the new board should appoint someone on their request to fill that position. Now, I agree you must have done some good stuff, but I think we need to move on, let some new blood come in. Also, these public comments, why can't we have them at the end when everything else is discussed? These public comments are coming way before everything is discussed. We would like to talk about everything that's going on, the salary discussion. I think that's wrong. I think those salaries should have been decreased way before now and not going for the new board. I think you're trying to pimp the new board going in, my personal opinion. Seriously, why, your last day in service here, are you trying to now request to lower the salaries? I don't agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, everyone. Christine Holcomb.
Order.
Christine Holcomb, on behalf of SS Downtown, Inc. SS Downtown, Inc. would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of the trustees sitting up here today. In a few short years, you've helped us bring greater attention and resources to Harrison's Island and San Soucy in particular. Through working with Senator Hurtel, you've been able to secure funds for an LG wheel, a much-needed and highly anticipated infrastructure improvement, and got legislature, if approved, for a second DDA to be located on the island. You've provided us with letters of support for funding opportunities we've pursued, and you partnered with us on a project to install a welcome sign for town. While there is a good chance that these things don't matter to the majority of Clay Township, we assure you the support you've shown for SS Downtown, Inc. and our mission has not gone unnoticed by the members of our organization and the island community. So once again, on behalf of SS Downtown, Inc., we thank you all, and we wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Public comments, Dawn.
Dawn Davy, Mayor Protown, City of Algenack. After decades of, shall we say, animosity between our two communities, we have come to a place where there's a spirit of unity between us, working together because what is good for one is good for all. Over the past eight months or so, that spirit of unity is no longer clear. I worry that the speculation and innuendo geared towards our city has set a tone which could affect the relationship between our two communities. During wastewater treatment plant tour, Trustee Bory had passed out campaign material, notably discharge monitoring reports from 2023, specifically the months of March, April, and August. At the top of that page, she wrote, "In 2023, with no high-water issues, we are still over capacity with no plan to address it." Mrs. Bory, just to be clear, those three specific months had significant amounts of rainfall. March 2023, 7.1 inches of snow in March, 3.37 inches of rain. The average monthly total precipitation for March is 2.4 inches. April 2023, 6.24 inches of rain. The average total precipitation for April is 3.3 inches. August 2023, 7.8 inches of rain, 8.24, record, they have record-breaking rainfall. Average precipitation for August is 3.3 inches, but you said no high-water issues for those three months. Now, Trustee Bory attended the November 7th County Board of Commission meeting to speak about the proposed Brownfield development plan that had been removed from the agenda before she decided to speak. Trustee Bory, are you aware that the authority has hired an engineering firm to do a wastewater system evaluation, a five-year and a 20-year capital improvement plan based on that evaluation, to do a polymer feed study to replace the current system, which is already budgeted for, and to do funding prep and review of funding opportunities? Now, she also read correspondence between the County DPW and the, what was called the Downriver Communities back from 2020. During her comments, Mrs. Bory stated, and I quote, "They put the people who would not fix it in charge. Nothing has been done to correct this problem." But after the meeting, she stated in reply on social media that she was aware of work being done to correct the problem. And in that social media reply, she added, "I am also concerned about all the campsites at the state park connecting to the sewer plant." So I have to ask, have you checked with Eagle? As it is Eagle who will determine if the plant can handle it. Did you know that the DNR was required to get a permit from Eagle before they even started working? And not for nothing, which I didn't know, that the north end of the park is connected to Cotterville's system. Now, having newly elected officials question the integrity of the wastewater treatment plant, who don't bother to use recent information, who imply that staff at the plant aren't doing their jobs, to recklessly state that raw sewage is being dumped into the river, to state that if I personally cared about my constituents, I shouldn't be taking a lackluster view about the 26-mile road expansion. And these all happened during the campaigns of the newly elected officials on Clay Township's board. These kinds of statements affect not only my city, but our whole community, and it sets a bad tone going forward. It has taken a long time for our two communities to get to the point that we are now. to get to the point that we are now. Somebody has to set the tone that started during the campaigns of these newly elected officials. I don't know how you're going to do it, but it needs to start yesterday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more public comments, please?
My name is Diane Miller, 7311 B Lane. And I have a lot of the same concerns that Paul addressed and Sandy. I think it's wrong for an outgoing board to reduce a salary that was approved in the budget just in June from $42,000 down to $40,000, which was the salary in 2017. And at the same time, you are not decreasing the trustees' money, only the clerk, treasurer, and supervisor. Now, you've also got a resolution to raise the cost for the Board of Review from $100 that was set in 2017 up to 120. So, in one instance, you're raising compensation for one area, and you're lowering it for another. I think that's wrong. I've been waiting, anticipating the audit. And we're going to have a presentation on the audit tonight, and yet there was no link to the audit. We couldn't even review it before we came tonight. I don't know if that was done on purpose, but it's kind of disheartening that all these other actions are being taken, and we get no opportunity to review the audit. I don't understand why we're transferring funds to Music in the Park. They originally requested that this be done on August 12th. They sent you a follow-up on September 17th, and now we're down to the last minute, and now you're going to take $15,000 out of Music in the Park and give it to Algonack? I thought, I thought zero budget, zero balance budgeting was being done. There shouldn't be a balance in Music in the Park funds. And when did we ever receive this money that we're giving back to them? You know, this board has never, and it's been requested on many occasions, has never shown us accounts receivable. You always tell us it's money in, money out, but you never show us the money in, you only show us the money out. So, that's disheartening, and I'm looking forward to new transparency and that being shown. There's no information on Harrison's Island property transfer. We have no idea what that's about. Personally, I'm a little bit upset that you're working on replacing a culvert on Bayview Shores for their canal, but I still, after years, I still haven't gotten any help from you guys on getting the culverts installed on Steyer Road that were supposed to be there, and all those people at the end of Ed Lane, B Lane, and Joe Char that all got flooded because there were no culverts for the water to flow to the other side. That's ridiculous. And also, the terms here, for the Board of Review, their terms don't even expire until January 1st of 2025. But now you're going to, you're going to give them their raise now before you walk out of office? That should be something that's handled by the new board. And I also don't agree that you should self-appoint yourself to a board, the DDA board. And you say that you're replacing Bob Finn. Bob Finn is a business owner. I thought it was supposed to be so many business owners and so many residents. You're not, you know, you're replacing a business owner with a resident. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Pam Murdis, Colony Drive. I actually do agree with you, maybe for one, Marine, that certainly the salary should not be set right now because it seems like you didn't take off the $100,000, that, Marine, that you said you're going to be doing. So, unless that reflects $100,000 that's going to be saved, then you really shouldn't be doing that yet. But I, you know, Marine, you are surrounded by people on the board who have integrity and served our township extremely well. You worked with these people for years, but for some reason, you chose to throw them under the bus and mislead the public regarding the great things that this board has accomplished. Michigan does have an ethics code. You, as an elected official, had a fiduciary duty owed to all members of the public, but you breached it when you chose to join the primary winners and lead a campaign of lies intent on misleading the people of the same township that you were supposed to serve. For instance, collecting the $30 water debt fee was a means of looking into the future to pay for the aging water lines. As a public, as a board member, you knew this, but you chose to mislead the public. There has never been a $40,000, there's never been a $40,000 bonus paid to our current supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, and you are well aware of that. However, you chose to mislead the public about that too, as well as numerous other things. I don't know if it was yet another lapse in judgment for you or a character flaw, but we'll soon find out as you serve another term. I would love to be proven wrong, Marine, I really would, because I care about this township. John and Mark, unfortunately, each of you are the only two trustees in the new board who actually deserve to have the word "trust" in your position of trustee. Artie, Christie, Cindy, and Chris, you are amazing people of great character and integrity, and you have served our township well. Actually, you have been the best board that this township has had. I've said it before, and I will continue to say, you have not failed us, we have failed you. God bless each of you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Murray, and I live at 7302 Flamingo Street. This is the first board meeting I've ever come to. And I don't know any of you except I met Cindy, I think, once in Lexington at a boat dock on a weekend. However, I'm really shocked that people come up, and they're just lambasting against one board member, when, if you notice, she's the only board member that asked about why we're voting on something at the beginning of the meeting without having a meeting. And she was told, "We'll just vote no, we're passing it through." So, I'm going to ask each one of you board members, when other things come up on the agenda tonight, to remember your oath of office for that fiduciary responsibility and vote in the best interest of the residents and not because of the personal vendettas of a few disgruntled. Thank you.
Iden Tesh, Algonack. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for your service.
Your address, please.
145 Channel Side. And I know it can be a thankless job. I'm here tonight as the co-chair of the St. Clair County Elections, Election Integrity Committee. I was contacted on Election Day by the election inspector at, on Harrison's Island regarding, Artie, that you were over there in the polling building, which is unlawful. You did not have credentials.
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay, I will get, excuse me. It's my public comment. Okay? That you were bringing dinner to the poll workers, and we'll let someone else decide whether or not that was lawful. But at the end of the police report, it said that you were credentialed, oh, excuse me, that you were deputized by Cindy Valentine to bring dinner to the election inspectors. Okay? Again, we'll let someone else decide if that is lawful, but it certainly is the appearance of impropriety. Okay? And that's what we did on Election Night, is to make sure everything ran smoothly in this county and in Macomb County. Also, as you're aware, there's a defamation lawsuit. Yes, it's been a very contentious election, but when somebody files a defamation lawsuit, you better believe there is a cause of action. So, it's not funny anymore. This is serious, and it goes to the reflection of all of us in the community and in Algonack. So, obviously, that's going to be resolved. But the point is that with all of the mudslinging, the people decided they want to change. They're ready for a new board. They want more transparency and accountability. And so, I go to the agenda item. Artie, we all have to live in this community, and we have to live together. And the fact that you want to appoint yourself to the DDA is concerning, and especially because of your relationship with the EDA. You were appointed, and many times over the years, you never wanted to be on the EDA. It was a waste of money, a waste of time. And then, all of a sudden, Jeff Baum and Dan Casey come along, and they appoint you. And now, the EDA is wonderful.
Paul Cassidy will be on the EDAs. They put the supervisor on the board, not Artie Bryson.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to clear that up.
Thank you. Okay, but my point is, you're the one who wanted nothing to do with the EDA. And the EDA is behind this 26-mile road development, bringing all the solar farms in, the wind farms, the industrialization, the Chinese battery plants. And so, with the new board of commissioners coming in, there is going to be some changes on the EDA as well. So, as we all know, that what is happening here in our county with all this industrialization, the EDA, Jeff Baum, Dan Casey are behind it. So, hopefully, Paul Cassidy can at least put the brakes on so the people can decide what they want. And on that note, I respectfully ask that you table that appointment for the DDA because of transparency and accountability and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
My name is Tom Sullier, 9634 Lake Point, and I represent the Clay Township Board of Review. I just want to point out, this is something that gets appointed every two years. We have to be reappointed. The ongoing state-mandated training for the year of 2025 is ongoing now. And so, in order for us to proceed, that is why it's part of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I have a written one today. Sarah Clements, 9400 Folkert. Good evening, members of the board, friends, and fellow citizens. I stand before you tonight as a representative of many Clay Township residents who have gathered to express our heartfelt gratitude to four individuals who have given their time, energy, and dedication and service to our community. As I speak these words, please know that they come not just from me but from countless members of our township who recognize and deeply appreciate the commitment and hard work these individuals have put forth. While there may not be a formal resolution, a certificate, or a plaque tonight, I hope that this expression of thanks holds even more meaning as it reflects the sincere appreciation of those you have impacted. To those who have served, Chris O'Regan, Clay Township trustee, eight years. Kristi Hiltonan, Clay Township treasurer, seven years. Cindy Valentine, Clay Township clerk, 10 years. And Artie Bryson, Clay Township supervisor, 12 years. Your legacy is not defined by titles or accolades, but by the moments when you listened, when you fought for what was right, when you put the needs of our residents first. You've been the ones who stayed late, who answered the phones when no one else did, who made the hard decisions even when they were unpopular, and who faced challenges head-on for the betterment of Clay Township. Of course, your dedication to public service has left a permanent mark on this community, from improving the lives of residents to fostering a spirit of collaboration to addressing the needs, everyday needs of our township with integrity and compassion. You have embodied what it means to be a true public servant, and for that, we are forever grateful. As you move on from this chapter, know that your contributions will not be forgotten. They live on in the projects that you champion, in the lives you've touched, in the strong foundation you've helped build for our future. Thank you for the countless hours you've invested, the sleepless nights you've endured, and the unwavering commitment you've shown to making Clay Township a better place for all of us. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors, knowing that you carry the respect, admiration, and deep gratitude of this community wherever you go. Thank you for everything you've done and for everything you've been to us. With sincere appreciation and respect, I offer these words on behalf of a very grateful township. And I will say, after listening to everything tonight and all the comments, I know that I have become more involved through this election process, and I will continue to come to these meetings, and I will continue to be involved, and I'll continue to hold the new board accountable. I hope and I pray for every success of the new board. I hope that they do right by the residents of this township as you all have. And that's it. I just, I wish everybody well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
White Simon, Harrison's Island, 4722 Green Drive. I am not here to address you. I am here to clarify item 1M, stating that as a property transfer Harrison's Island Lions is somewhat incorrect. That is a property exchange with Harrison's Islands. Because four years ago, we gave you an easement to connect the fire department to the Harrison's Island Lions septic system. It has taken us four years to get onto the agenda, and all the excuses we ever heard were at the lawyers. That's almost impossible. Thank you.
Andy Goulay, 19, shoot, 9812 North River Road. And again, I've been around for a long, long time. First, I won't be able to stay for very long. The, there's a couple of things that happen. I want to give everybody a reminder that the Goodfellows Charity Bowl that the Algonack Lions Club puts on is December 8th. And we welcome people to show up and bring a lot of money with them so we can give it to the Goodfellows for No Kid Without a Christmas. Another event that happens later on, which will be February 1st, is Meatloaf Bowl Number Four. And the reason I bring up Meatloaf Bowl Number Four, which is, for those who don't know, if you think you can make a really good meatloaf, enter this contest. There's a cash prize. So, what, part of what happens at Meatloaf Bowl is we serve 30 pounds worth of my recipe of meatloaf, which I won a championship in 2017. I have a trophy and everything. And so, we serve that as a dinner at Meatloaf Bowl, and we also have the contest. Reason I bring that to your attention is, tomorrow night is the banquet for the football program, Algonack Football Program. And we're going to give them the Meatloaf Bowl dinner. And we're doing 60 pounds for 100 people, and it's football players are going to be hungry. So, and I have more supplies being delivered here shortly. That being said, first of all, earlier I heard that the general public should have been able to review the audit before it showed up here tonight. I've been on the receiving end of many audits as a public official, and the public doesn't see the audit until it's presented by the auditors, and that has not happened yet. So, just to, just, that's just, I'm sorry, folks. That's the way it works. The, that the township should stop conducting business because an election has happened, and just shut the door and turn off the lights and wait for the new people to show up, and not worry about paying your bills and not worry about appointing people to things that need to be appointed to now because they need to be trained between now and January, and any manner of things. Things that happen routinely, year after year, routinely. Now, all of a sudden- Now all of a sudden, there are folks that want to complain about that. And that's fine. It's a free country. We can all complain. We can have differences of opinion, which we do. At the same point, good job for last 12 and however many years that we've been going forward. I know there's several officials sitting in over here in the cheap seats from the next door neighbors. And it has been spoken that they appreciate the things that have happened between Clay Township and the city of Algonac. I remember one time back when it wasn't this way. And there was a very contentious city council meeting. And what, Mike Pellerito, who at the time was the clerk here, he stood up and he said, you know, I'm from Clay Township, I'm the clerk, I'm this, whatever, and so on. He said, but when people ask me where I'm from, I say I'm from Algonac because we're all one thing. We're all one group of people. We're all, we're all in this together whether we like it or not. So it behooves us to pick up our pieces, put them together, and make good things happen. Over the course of time between then and now, I've watched that happen and I've lived through that happening. And as part of the school system, I've seen it happen in leaps and bounds in cooperation between Clay Township, City of Algonac, and Algonac Schools, which is wonderful. Our kids deserve it. And so, good job. Thank you for your service and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Andy. Any other public comments?
I'd like to thank the whole board. It's a job I wouldn't want and I'd like to thank the incoming board. I, I probably don't even have four more election cycles to go through in my life. And I will tell you, I hope we never have to go through one like this. It was absolutely horrible. I've got neighbors that wouldn't speak to other neighbors, people that fought with each other. We've got to get along. I try and get along with people. Everybody I voted for didn't make it, but whoever didn't, I would support them 100 degrees. This is where we live, you know? And I sure hope we can go forward because this is terrible. I will tell you, you know, I even look around and I see people plotting for negative comments and some people for positive comments. I wish you guys all the best. I really do. But we can't, we can't go on like this. We were the laughing stock of the entire county. People were laughing at us up and down here on, and that's a shame. That is really a shame. I hope we can go forward. I will give every person on the board whatever support I can, not that it's much good, but if we want to live here and we don't want to hate our neighbors because we didn't vote the same. Unfortunately, the people that voted, voted. I don't know what to say, you know? But it's a great place to live. And I guess the majority spoke. I don't know how to change that. I don't know for the people that want, you know, this current board still in. But we've got to live there. And I'll give you all the support I can, but I don't want to hate the people because their hateful back and they make horrible comments. And to me, the public comments on the social media don't belong. Good luck to the new board, good luck to the old board, and I just pray that the people can get along.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
Hello. Tanya Hogan, 7259 Blue Bell. First of all, I want to thank the board who has put up their time. This is not an easy job. And I also want to thank the community because you guys voted for me. And I'm here because I want to do right by our community. I want to bring the community together in a positive way. That's what we all want. So I'm hoping with this transition, we can bring some positivity back into our community and come together. And I'm really hoping it can go smooth. And once again, thank you guys for what you've done while you were in office. But sometimes it's just time for change.
Any other public comments? Going once, twice?
Artie, can I say one more thing or no?
Okay, real quick.
It is best, I promise.
In my, in my moment of being in my feelings through that, I just wanted to, I guess, respond to some of the comment that I've heard about the DDA and about Artie being appointed or appointing himself, however that works. I'm not quite certain why people in this town, other than having personal vendettas, would think having you as part of the DDA, which is meant to grow our community and bring people in. You're a lifetime resident. You have been in office for 12 years and you have so many people in this community who love you and respect you. And so I'm not quite certain why someone would have a problem putting you on a board that important. You're not, you don't get to spend money on your own. You don't get to make decisions on your own. So I for one, support that. And in regards to the salary decrease or getting rid of the bonus money that everyone talked about, that's all it is. We're getting rid of the bonus pay that the new board said they didn't want. That's, that's what I read and somebody had a flyer. That's, so.
Thanks, Sarah.
Any other public comments?
Do I have to repeat who I am? Shannon Cody, 2985 Fruit Street. This is a little story about Artie. I met you, Artie, 16, 15, 16 years ago. He was an accounting client. He had his business in Marine City. And when I'd be sitting there doing his books, I would hear nonstop talk about the park and the beach that were not here yet. And Artie lived in Marine City, worked in Marine City, but was working his tail off to make this park happen. I think it was this park in particular. I was always eavesdropping. But again, this is 15, 16 years ago when he didn't even live in this town. So if you doubt what he wants to do for the community, please don't because that was as a non-resident.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Do you have something?
Wasn't going to speak tonight. It's not my favorite thing to do in life.
Anyman Addras?
Tim Ireland, Gino Road. I'll give you that. I want to thank everyone on this board. I think through everyone's tenure, I voted for each and every one of you throughout my 36 years of living here. I moved here from the city with my wife. We picked this area based on the people. You couldn't go anywhere in this place without somebody saying hello to you. I didn't know them. I'm driving on the road, I'm getting waved at. Okay. It's a great place to live. I saw this election tear this community apart. Both sides slashing at each other, name-calling, things I saw in the city, not things I saw in Clay Township. I think everybody in this room cares about this community. They want to be here if they didn't. Elections come and go. People come and go. We support people. We don't support other people. But we're all living in this community. I looked at this agenda. I wasn't going to come up to the meeting until I saw the agenda. I watch a lot of different communities' board meetings, looking at a lot of them going through the last two weeks or so, going through their phases of transitioning. Every one of those boards were preparing the other board. They weren't voting on things that they thought the other board should be voting on or would affect it. One board was even a little bit hesitant about setting up their meetings for the year because they didn't know if it would conflict. That's what I expect of this board. I didn't expect to see stuff on here. They either tried to handcuff people. Mr. Bryson is going to be appointed to the board. Two-thirds of the people didn't want him as their supervisor, but yet he's going to put him in. I think that should be left up to the next board. It's an appointment. I think changing salaries is not legal to do as an outgoing board. And I hope we all heal. Lot of comments. It almost seemed like there was a two-sided room here. And that's not what we are. We all know that. Don't let this election changes.
Comment to the board, not the audience.
Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Bryson. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm talking to the residents that I live with. And as a board, I think you should look at the residents, try to heal us, not, not do things that are going to divide us. Go out with dignity and respect. Same dignity and respect I have for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Okay, we're going to move right along. Thank you, everybody, for the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the board meeting minutes of 11:04. Notices of resignation from PC T. Cozel, PC and ZBA Recording Secretary, resignation S. Purcell, Frank Whitey's Coordinator, resignation. Foye Coordinator, resignation. Parks and Rec Coordinator, resignation of C. Babish. Admin Support, resignation of Al Backen. Office Cleaning, resignation of Kay Randall. And Dispatch Retirement of Bev Rose, who has served our Fine Dispatch Center for over 30 years.
Reports?
Oh. Board approved reports from, check reports from 11:04 and in-between meetings 11:04 to 11:14.
Support. Okay, we have motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our audit presentation from UHY. Want to take away Paul and Tammy?
Hey, well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We handed out a copy of your annual financial audit. It's in the kind of blue cover. And we also handed out a outline that will kind of go through. The audit itself is about 75 pages. We try to narrow it down because we know you have limited time tonight to go through it and just try to do it. As you know, you contract with our firm to do your annual financial audit. We come in, spend a week or two with your staff doing the audit. Your staff is very cooperative with us. We then go back, pull it all together, come back with a draft copy, sit down with supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, go through it page by page, and then finalize it and come to a meeting like this and go through it. So what we'll do is, again, if you have any questions, stop me along the way. There, overall, you're in excellent financial condition, but we'll talk about some of the numbers as we go along. If you turned in that handout, it's just there. One of the first things in the audit report is something called the Independent Auditor's Report. Technically, it's the only portion of the report that belongs to UHY. It's where we give an opinion on whether your financial statements are presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. And you have what they call an unmodified or clean opinion. That's what you're striving for. After the board approves it tonight, we have to send it on to the Michigan Department of Treasury. That's one of the first things they look for is what type of an opinion the board has received. Again, it's an unmodified or clean opinion. The next two items on that outline, we're not going to spend a lot of time, but I just want to touch base with them. It's something called the Management Discussions and Analysis. That's about a five-page letter that's required to be in your audit. You'll see it's in parentheses what pages it's on in the large document there. But it gives the reader an overview of the township, some very summarized financial information as well as some information on your current budget also. The item three, what they call the Townshipwide Financial Statements. A few years ago, they changed and actually required two sets of financial statements in your audit report. You have what they call the commercial set of financial statements and you have the traditional way governments have reported for 40 years. The commercial way basically adds the value of, the book value of buildings, all your vehicles, all your capital assets, less any of your long-term liabilities, where the traditional way don't report those because you can't spend them. And those are on pages nine through 11 of your audit report. We won't spend any time tonight. And really, the Treasury Department's more concerned with the traditional way the governments have reported. But it is required in the finance people of the world when you go to sell bonds and stuff. They're more interested in the commercial way than the traditional way. Roman numeral four there, the Fund Financial Statements. The General Fund, this year you have assets as of June 30, 2024 of $3,224,248. You have liabilities of $104,132. So as of June 30, 2024, your fund balance was $3,120,116. And you can see the numbers for 2023 right next to it there. The next item is what they call your Statement of Revenues, Expenses, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance for your Operating Statement. This year, your General Fund took in $2,158,501. Your expenditures was $1,776,208. You had what they call other financing uses of $23,640, which primarily is a transfer to another fund there. So for the year ended June 30, 2024, your General Fund was to the positive $358,653. And you can, you can see the 2023 numbers for comparison. We always give you some graphs on your General Fund. If you turn back to page four. These are pie graphs that kind of just give you a little picture of where your money comes from and is spent. You'll see your largest piece of your General Fund revenues, again, is intergovernmental revenues, which primarily consists of your state shared revenues amounted to, accounted for 44% of all your General Fund revenues. The next largest piece is the tax revenues or are the tax revenues, 26% there. And you can see each piece of the pie, pretty consistent from year to year. Last year, the intergovernmental was 48% and the taxes was 26%. One thing I'd like to point out this year, the interest is up pretty consistently, pretty considerably. It was 3% of your General Fund. It was up to 7%. As everybody knows, the interest rates went up this year and you earn quite a bit more on interest. And one of the things with pie graphs is when you change one piece of the pie, it affects all the other pieces. So just because, you know, one number goes up or down, it might, you may have still spent or received the same amount of money, but as a percentage, it could change. Page five does the same thing for expenditures. And the largest chunk of the pie for your General Fund is what they call General Government, and that's the assessor. It's a lot of different departments, assessing department, the supervisor, the clerk, the treasurer, a whole bunch, the township hall. And these classifications are determined by the Michigan Department of Treasury. They publish a chart of accounts that's very detailed, very structured, where they want stuff reported there. And you can see the next largest piece was public safety. The final graph there is a, across the township, we're going to talk about, we've been talking about the General Fund so far, but you, as you know, you have a lot of other funds that are used to account for operations of the township. This takes all the departments, all the funds, and puts them down and say, where did you, where did the township spend their dollars? Overall, almost 50 cents on every dollar goes for public safety. Police, fire, building inspection, 49% in 2024. That's up from 46% in 2023. The next largest piece is, goes to your water fund of 18% there, and then public works and general government. But again, you can see it says pretty consistent from year to year, where the dollars are, where they come from, and where you spend them. If we can turn back to page two. Page two, we start talking about what they call special revenue funds. These are funds set up to have a more detailed accounting for certain types of revenues and expenditures. A lot of these funds are required either by bond issue or the Michigan Chart of Accounts. And you can see it lists each one of the funds there. There's what, probably 10, 11 funds, shows the revenues, expenditures, so forth. I'm not going to read them for you tonight. And just because they maybe have expenditure over revenue, that doesn't mean it's a real bad thing. It just means sometime funds build their balance up and spend it down. The only fund there that I probably would touch a little bit on is the Road and Canal Project. They actually have a negative fund balance of $28,000. We'll touch on that a little bit, they, when we go to the next item, sorry, there. But you can see overall, it But you can see overall, they look good. Your fund balance, we also list the fund balance for each of the funds, and I will kind of go through those. You'll see your fire fund had a fund balance as of June 30, 2024, of $533,707. Your police fund, $1,067,753. Your CARES Act Fund, $69,889. The Rubbish Collection Fund, $122,283. Your Drug Enforcement Fund, $17,148. The Oaklawn Cemetery, $43,893. The Music in the Park, $21,091. The Parks and Rec, $101,024. The Pragmite Program Fund, $11,632. The Ambulance Fund, $142,455. And then finally, as I was gonna talk before about your Road and Canal Project, that one is what's kind of in a deficit, but it's an accounting mechanism why it's in a deficit. When you levy special assessments that come in over the number of years, you can't recognize them as revenue immediately. So you did the project, levied the special assessments, and you're gonna have the money come in, but you can't record it as revenue until the money actually comes in, in the door. It's an accounting technicality, and the state's aware of that. So you'll have to file a form, and they're well aware of that accounting issue with that. The Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, you'll see they had revenues of $3,402 this year, no expenditures, with a fund balance of $81,347. And there, you can see on each one of these items, we list the page so that you can find them in the larger document and get a little bit more detail, just try to make it easy for, for you. On page three, you also have what they call enterprise funds or your water and sewer funds. And on this page, we've kind of listed your operating revenues and expenses. Bottom line, kind of on a borderline cash basis, your water fund was actually to the negative $115,000. Your sewer fund was to the good $147,000. The working capital of each of those funds, because enterprise funds record the value of the water system and the sewer systems within the balance sheet of each of the funds, the equity of each of those funds are real high compared to like fund balance of the General Fund. So everybody always says, well, how much money do we have to spend if we had to do a project? So if you take the current assets, assets that are cash, things that are readily converted to cash, and paid off all your bills, short-term bills, how much would you have left over? You'd see your water fund would be to the good about $4 million, and your sewer fund about 1.5 million. So if you had to do a project, you know, you could use some of those resources for that. That is a very quick synopsis of the numbers. I got a couple of letters I'd like to talk about, but any questions on the numbers or any comments?
Our General Fund balance. 2023, we put in $310,000 back into it. For '24, we put $358,000 back into our General Fund, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's pretty good.
So they were talking about the water debt service fees. She was saying it's inaccurate. I see it says we have collected $607,000
Yes.
in debt service fees, and what is our debt?
There, there is no debt. And one of the letters we're gonna talk about has a comment about that.
Okay.
And has it in the past, too. In the back of your report, loose, there's a couple of letters. The first one doesn't have a heading. It's a one-page letter that I'd like to talk about. When our firm comes in to do your audit, not only do we audit the numbers, confirm the, you know, what you have, you show us what's in the bank, we confirm it with the bank, we do a lot of other testing, but we also gotta take a look and see if there's two sets of eyes on your processes, to make sure you have good checks and balances. If we become aware of any weaknesses, we're required to report it to the board. I'm happy to report again, there's only one minor, and it's really a technicality of a weakness. Back when Enron was going on, the accounting profession came up with the idea that every entity should have somebody on staff that can draft their own financial statements. And that includes all the notes, includes everything. That's what we do for a living, and most entities our size rely on the auditors to do that for them, because it's not cost feasible to have somebody on staff to draft just one. And a lot of, a lot of governmental units and other, other entities have that same deal. Now, if you're General Motors or, you know, bigger corporations, you have people on staff, but very few governmental units, unless you're, you know, the city Detroit's, and some of the bigger ones have that. That's the only comment we have regarding controls. There's also an audit communication letter there. This letter's kind of to tell you how the audit process went. We start trying to time, schedule the audit, you know, probably four to six months in advance, kind of get an idea when we're coming in. We get it more refined as we get closer. But this kind of goes through whether there was any, any difficulties in, in there. And it goes through a number of different things, some estimates in your financial statements. A lot of people think that when the auditors come through, every number is 100% audited. There's a lot of estimates in your financial statements, you know, things like, how long will assets last? You gotta depreciate them. Your retirement system has, you know, the retirement liability is a huge estimate. You know, how long will people live? What kind of investment income will be made on your investments that's with MERS, so forth. So there's a lot of estimates in here, and that kind of just outlines that. And it goes through a number of different things on here. And then, as I said, when we get this done, we pull it all together, and we come down, and we sit down each year with supervisor, clerk, and treasurer. And if we talk, if we have any items we talk about, we usually attach them to this letter so that you're aware of kind of anything that we talked about. And that's, it says attachment A on the top. Just when we were doing a quick check on the rates, we found one commercial entity that we just didn't have support for a portion of it, nothing really there. The investment depository policy, there's a, there's different levels of, on your policy says you can't have more than like 50% of CDs. And because you, you're with, what they, Cedar Programs and IDCS or whatever the initials are, which they're buying a lot of CDs, when you put them all together, they were approximately 70%. All FDIC insured. But what we say here is just either, you know, abide by your policy or modify it to there. There was no problems with it. And then back to your question on the, on the water debt. For the last few years, your collection on your debt has exceeded your debt liability, and it's, the money's all shown as restricted so that you can't spend it for normal operations. And we suggest either, you know, doing away with it. If you have more debt coming, as long as it's okay with legal counsel, then if you can use it for that, or, or, you know, however you can handle that.
Future debt.
There, what's that?
For future debt.
But, yeah. That's to your question.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have debt coming up because we have some water projects, but many people in the community just felt it was not ethically right because they're paying maybe for over a year a water debt program that if they moved or whatever, wouldn't benefit from it. So I didn't know, you know, if that was considered ethical on your part, or if, if that should be stopped. The new board should look at stopping that until the debt appears.
Yeah, I think it should be looked at. I think it's a legal question. Can you do that? And, you know, is that what you, you know, want to do? A lot of communities will convert it over to a capital improvement charge, rather than call it a debt service charge. It's really one of the same. You know, you levy debt to do capital improvements, or you just keep it and you use it for capital improvement, improving the system. But the terminology has to be, you know, changed.
Yeah, it should be changed. Okay.
That's a very quick synopsis of your 75-page document.
Right.
I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
One thing I wanted to point out, Paul, if I could. They always do a little audit on our building services, I guess you could call it, our building department.
Okay.
And we're not allowed to make money on those, but we never have. Our, you know, because everyone complains about the price of permits. But this past year, we actually lost $25,000 in our building department. And I've seen it as high as $45,000. So we did raise some purpose, some fees to counteract that, but, yeah, we, I mean, otherwise, all the people subsidizing the services provided for people getting building permits. So just want to make that point. Anybody have any questions for Paul? It's 10 years, I think, you've been doing?
Seems, seems all right.
It's gotten a lot better.
Absolutely.
I remember this letter we used to get with all the weaknesses. There was six to eight of them on every audit, going back to the 80s. We had a problem with an old clerk we took care of, and in one year, we got it down to this, and that's what has been maintained ever since. So I'm proud of that fact.
Make a motion to accept and file. The audit for year ending June 30, 2024. Christie's support?
We have support? Okay. We have a motion to accept and file and support any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next we have our healthcare renewal. And we got quotes, and boy, they went up. Our renewal for the same policy was an increase of $134,000. If we did the, and what we do, we have a high deductible, and because we get lower premiums, and then the township will pay the deductibles for the employees as it comes up. And it, it's a better way of doing business, because if we just did a straight policy that covers everyone's medical expense, it would have been $276,000 more than what we paid this year for the same thing. And it netted out this year by doing the reimbursement of the, of the deductibles, we ended up netting out $140,000. Last year, we netted out $121,000. So we saved over a quarter million dollars in two years by using this. So anyhow, just want to explain that. So we've got various quotes, and my recommendation, you know, we got quotes from Blue Cross, Priority Health, HAP, and V E B A, and United Healthcare. My recommendation, HAP, is, is about the same as we're paying now. Basically, we're gonna be paying actually $300 less a month for, for the health insurance. It's a, it's a different network. That's the only problem. I mean, some of the, some people might not be able to use their same doctors. We've done this in the past, which would happen. Blue Cross would give us a big increase that we couldn't stomach. So then we would go to HAP for a year, and basically, they're lowballing us to get their business. And then next year, HAP will be significantly higher, and then we go back to Blue Cross, and they'll give us a better deal. That's how it's been historically anyhow. But like I say, if we just renewed what we had, $134,000 more, and across the board, this was the cheapest. So if we go with HAP, PPO, HRA, $3,500, it will save us $134,000. Everyone follow that? Jack explains a little bit in his letter.
Jack, Jack couldn't make it tonight?
No. No, he had back surgery.
He's the only one we got a quote from. I see you said Aetna declined to quote.
Right.
But we only got a quote from AccraSure, no one else?
We got Priority Health, we have, um, one, two, three, four, five.
I see they're all different, but is, that's all from Jack, right?
Yeah. It doesn't matter.
Whoever you go to.
It's gonna be the same from any company.
Okay.
Coverage remain the same?
Yep.
And what's the $3,500 mean? Does that mean our deductibles $3,500 instead of $5,000?
Yes.
And then what's it for family? $7,000?
Uh, I believe that's $3,500.
$3,500 is family? Because right now, it's...
No. $3,500 is single couple, and $7,000 is family.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. And right now, it's five and 10, right? So that's less that we have to pay on deductibles.
Well, I entertain a motion.
I've had, I just want all these insureds at some point in time.
Did, did the, anybody talk about HAP? I mean, was there, did you say anything to the employees about switching from?
Not yet. The, after, it'll be open renewal, uh, open renewal coming up, and that's a very busy time. I would, I would, for the new board and new people, I would, they're probably thanking us for doing it now and not waiting two more weeks.
I was just wondering, you know, I was hoping the employees were happy with it, because we want that, you know.
I mean, they like Blue Cross better.
Right.
But, you know, is it worth $134,000?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're already paying $77,000 a month, so it's a lot.
I'll make a motion to approve the Burnham and Flowers Healthcare Renewal.
I support it.
With HAP, PPO, HRA, $3,500.
Okay, we have motion, we have motion. Do we have support?
I support it.
Okay, you support it? Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, next we have Resolution 2431, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act. And that's a very busy time. I would, I would, for the new board and new people, I would, they're probably thanking us for doing it now and not waiting two more weeks.
I was just wondering, you know, I was hoping the employees were happy with it, because we want that, you know.
I mean, they like Blue Cross better.
Right.
But, you know, is it worth $134,000?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're already paying 77,000 a month, so it's a lot.
I'll make a motion to approve the Burnham and Flowers healthcare renewal.
I support it.
With HAP, PPO, HRA, 3500.
Okay, we have motion, we have motion. Do we have support?
I support it.
Okay, you support it? Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, next we have Resolution 2431, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, 152 of 2021, to opt out.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-31, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act of 152 of 2011.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion?
This is what we do every year, right?
Yep.
Well, this is the law that says government employees are supposed to pay 20% of the insurance. And, uh, and the, and the government, yeah, and the government shouldn't pay more than 80%. But if we want to opt out of it, then we can't give them the insurance that we want, right?
Right, and it would cost us more. About 200, 230,000 more. And we probably have five grievances filed.
Yeah.
All right, did we get support?
Yes.
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 I support it.
All right, roll call, please.
Krista Regan. Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Okay, next is setting salaries for the, and I'll just say, by state law, you have to set the salary of the incoming office before the term starts. You understand that? Before the term starts. Now, they can raise it going forward, but you cannot lower it during that whole term. Follow me? So there's all kinds of campaign promises that they were going to pay themselves 40,000.
That's not true.
If. If they want to pay themselves more, they can. But if they wanted to pay themselves 40,000, the salary has to be set the first, or the last meeting before the term starts. Yes. I'm not arguing. And if you go four years ago, at our meeting, we were doing the same thing. If you go back four years before that, that meeting, doing the same thing. And that's how it works. The, the salaries have to be set before the term starts.
Why are you lowering?
Because, and it is against the law for them to lower us, whatever the, the motion is here. It's against the law to lower them, but they can raise them. So the next board would have the, the freedom and ability to raise them, but they don't have the ability to lower them.
I Googled it, and it said, no, it is not legal for outgoing township officials in Michigan to decrease the pay for incoming township officials. So it says it's not legal.
You can raise them. The meeting's up here.
Can you remind me of the current salary?
It's 42,000.
Exactly?
Exactly.
I think Cindy makes 42.5, right? Or 43.5, Cindy?
I'd say we just postpone them. There's no salary resolution in effect as of November 21st, though. The one that we have currently expires November 20th. So just postpone them, and their first meeting in December, they can do their own resolution.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to postpone Resolution 2024-32, setting the salary of the township supervisor.
Can we postpone all of them at the same time, by chance?
I'd just like to do them one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, we have motion and support.
What was the motion, Chris?
To postpone.
Thank you.
To table the Resolution 2024-32.
Thank you.
We have motion and support.
Any more discussion? Uh, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
No.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Going to do the same for?
Board, I'll make a motion to table Resolution 2024-33, to set the salary of the township clerk.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Um, roll call.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
No.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have treasurer. Want to make a motion?
Board, I'll make a motion to table Resolution 2024-34, setting salary of township treasurer.
All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
No.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And trustees?
Board, I'll make a motion to table Resolution 2024-35, setting the salary of the township trustees.
So you're setting these?
Table Resolution 2024-35.
Why would you table that? The trustees haven't changed in any, any way. Same amount. Alan, suppose?
It's the same principle, Mark. That's the reason. That was my motion. You can reject it if you'd like. Do I have support?
Yes.
I have support.
Roll call.
Mark Bouchard?
No.
Artie Bryson?
No.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have Music in the Park, request to transfer the balance to the city of Elginak. Originally, Elginak did hold the money, um, for Music in the Park. Ever since it was created. And for some reason, it, it got transferred over here, I think because Cindy Babbage was doing it all for, all the communities together. And it was just easier for her to get checks to pay the bands. And she is no longer going to be doing that. And so the city of Elginak requested to transfer to the, to, um, back to them. Now, this isn't tax money, this is all from contributions and sponsorships and things like that for Music in the Park. And, um, so I, I don't think when it got, it was, when Elginak transferred here, they didn't have to get board approval or anything, they just did it. And I, I did talk to our attorney, she said, no, you should pass, or bring it to the board to, to actually do that. So that's what we're doing.
Let me ask this question. Uh, this money was funded by donations or?
Sponsorship.
Sponsorships?
Yep.
So is there a breakdown on what Clay Township sponsored and what Elginak sponsored?
It's, it's not an Elginak-Clay divided sponsorship. It's sponsorship for Music in the Park.
Yes, it's Music in the Park. It's not.
And we did not disperse it prior to getting our audit completed. So when they requested it, we still were in the middle of our audit, so we did not acknowledge their request.
And to add to that, it was sent over to Clay, I believe, when Linda was retiring from Elginak.
Right.
Um, just because there was some confusion over who was going to be doing what over there.
So what generally would this money be used for?
Music in the park, that's all.
And it will.
We pay, we pay the bands?
Yeah.
I understand that the bands paid to entertain. That's what Cindy told me.
Bands?
Yeah, band, you have to pay a certain amount to entertain.
We have to pay the bands, but sponsors pay the money, and then we give it to the bands, right?
Right.
Now, when they transferred the money here, was it 15,000? How much did they give us?
5,000.
5,000.
There's, um, there's money also, you gotta pay for rental for the stage, advertising. Uh, there's more costs than just pay the bands.
Right, and then we are going to be, I mean, so many, how many are done in Elginak and how many is done in our park? And the island, aren't the majority of the Music in the Parks here?
Music in the park.
Okay.
The islands through parks and restaurants.
Our, yeah, Islands Park, this is for the concerts in our park and in Elginak.
And how many do we put on and how many just Elginak?
Five and five.
It's even. Well, when she was going to collect the money from the sponsors, she's kind of representing both communities, or was she representing Clay?
She's representing Music in the Park, both, both communities.
So who in Elginak is going to represent Music in the Park and disperse the money?
Their treasurer. Who's now sitting, sitting treasurer.
Make a motion to approve the Music in the Park, Elginak, request transfer balance of $14,840.93 to the city of Elginak.
Support.
Motion and support. Any more discussion?
I don't know, I think the new board really wants to continue Music in the Park and, and.
Well, they can, they can continue.
But I mean.
It has nothing to do with it, it's just who's holding the money, and Elginak requested it back. Music in the park is not an Elginak thing, it is not a Clay Township thing, it's its own separate thing.
There's no agreement that says, there's no agreement in writing here that says there's going to be five in Clay Park and five in their park. They could take the money and they could do all 10 in their park.
It is for, exclusively for Music in the Park.
Right, but it could be 10 of their park. There could be 10, you know.
And, and they, and I think to the point is, they took their chances letting Clay's coordinator do that for Clay Township.
Right.
All we're doing is transferring the responsibility of hiring the bands back to Elginak.
Well, they.
Not even that, just paying the bands.
There's no agreement, there's no agreement that there's going to be any bands in our clay hall.
And there wasn't any agreement that there was going to be in Elginak?
Well, I'm not comfortable with releasing $15,000 without an agreement. You know, I mean, if they had an agreement that they're going to help, you know, that we would be able to be part of it. I mean, Cindy's gone, so now we have to put someone in that position. And we've got no agreement, and we're just, you know, they gave us 5 grand, we're going to give them 15 grand and hope for the best. That's three times as much money, Chris, as they gave us with their trust.
It's not, they didn't, they didn't give us the money, the money.
Well, they transferred the control of the money, whatever you want to say.
It's Music in the Park. It's just for Music in the Park. We can't take money out and go do another, uh, event. We can't take the money and, and use it anywhere else but for Music in the Park.
I understand that, but there's no agreement. There's no agreement that there's going to be five in five. There's not. If there was an agreement, there would be five in our park and five in their park, I wouldn't allow it. So maybe the new board should get that agreement together and then transfer it.
This is the first time I've seen this amount in Music in the Park.
But it also depends on the time, time of year that it's being transferred, Mark. The actual season is now closed, she, this is how money she has lined up for the spring to get going on the first half of the Music in the Park before having to get sponsorship fees for the second half and then work on.
What financial burden do we give Elginak with this money when we were, obviously, when we were doing it?
We do a budget every year.
Yeah.
Every year with Music in the Park.
So Artie, is, is MIP a separate line item in the budget?
It's its own fund.
It's its own fund.
Right. Separate fund. Doesn't even, uh, it's not even in our audit, is it?
No, it's in our.
Is it? Okay.
Who does the accounting on that? You do?
UHY.
It's through BSNA, and it's audited by UHY.
I don't think a couple of weeks is going to make a difference between now and spring. To let the new board get an agreement, make sure that they're covered so that the community has an assurance that they're going to have five, um, events in our Clay Township Park.
We have motion and support.
To transfer.
Why don't we chop the pot? Why don't we chop the pot? Let's send them back their half, we keep our half, and then we can come together. I don't want to divide a wedge.
It's not half and half. It, it's all for Music in the Park.
I understand that.
Yeah, you can't.
Well, then it separates it, and we have to do two Musics in the Parks. We want to keep working together as two communities.
But we don't have a Music in the Park coordinator. We don't have a Parks and Rec coordinator.
I'm sure the one will get hired.
You know how busy Mr. Galkin's going to be next week? He's not going to have time to be messing around with this. We're doing him a favor.
I'll, we can transfer it over after we get the agreement that we're going to get five events.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion before we call a vote? Roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
No.
Maureen Bory?
I just want to mention that the board has been given notice.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Been given notice?
Yes or no?
So it's a no.
John DeBoyer?
No.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have appointments. A board review, Tom Sawyer, Dave Burley, Jill Bos, Bosie, and Deborah Addy. And you want to do the resolution for the salary at the same time?
Make a motion to appoint the board of review, Tom, Dave, Jill, Debbie as alternate, and Resolution 2024-36, setting the board of review compensation.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
When is the training?
I'm going now.
They're already in training?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's not like we have to appoint them when they're already in training. I mean, all of these things are supposed to be done by the new board, but I know you're trying to supposedly do them a favor. I don't know. I don't want to tie the new board's hands.
We have motion and support?
We do.
That's just a small, small issue.
Roll call.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
No.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Do we have to, uh?
No, we did both up in the block. All right, next, we have to approve our St. Clair County local, uh, or funding of $100,000 for the Bayview Shores, uh, bridge replacement.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Road Commission's local funding, uh, local road funding for the culvert replacement designated for Bayview Shores Drive between Anchor Bay Drive and Farnsworth.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
So it says that we have till December 30th on this one.
Right? Do you want to turn down $100,000?
Well, as long as we do it by December 30th, we're good.
This is accepting money, Maureen. This is not giving money away.
Well, we still, the board shall contribute.
This is accepting money.
All right, can you please?
I'm just trying, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just.
No, the board shall contribute $100,000.
It's a matching program.
Yes, it says the township shall contribute 150,000.
Right, 150 of the estimate. But the township can also go and seek state and federal money too. This is the first step. We got county money of $100,000 for a project that's estimated for 250,000. Now, if the new board wants to try to get more additional funding for it, they can. Do you not want to accept the 100,000?
This is just one of those things that there, there has till December 30th, and you're going to be filling Paul Cassidy in. and you're gonna be filling Paul Cassidy in on everything, I mean, I'm sure they're gonna wanna accept it, but we're still putting, having, you know, we're still committing to spending quite a bit of money.
Okay, roll call, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, um, I, before I was supervisor, I was on the DDA for about seven years. I have a lot of experience on the DDA. I'd still like to continue to serve on the DDA, um, after I'm supervisor. So.
I'll make a motion to appoint to the DDA Artie Bryson for a term November twentieth twenty twenty-four to November fifteenth twenty twenty-seven.
Support.
So that term is, uh, until twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah, three years. I'm abstaining.
So has Bob Finn already stepped down?
Yeah, he's, yeah.
I didn't see that, that he stepped down, I don't remember seeing that at any meetings.
He didn't wanna return, renew his term, so he wasn't on the last DDA appointments.
Can you remind me of how many members make up the DDA?
Nine.
So you're one of nine votes?
I'm one of nine.
Thank you.
And this is a current vacancy?
Yes.
And who's the chair?
Mark Thompson.
So Bob Finn was a business owner, do you normally replace with a business owner, like you were saying with the Sans Souci DDA?
Yeah.
So there'll be only one business owner now?
No, there's several business owners on it.
Okay. So what's their makeup? Like, you gotta make up recommendations?
It's not, it's not specific, actually, we usually have to try to get people to join. Um, Tom Bynum, he's on it, he's a businessman. Uh, Roy from Colony, Bull, um, Richard Seaford, who was a businessman owner, but he retired, but he still lives. Uh, Joe Little, he's a resident. Ann Cager, he, she was a business owner from the, uh, bank. Um, trying to think who else off the top of my head. Bobby Johnson had, um, buds.
So there was previous most of them, okay.
Yep. Let's do a roll call.
So who actually appoints the, uh, members of the DDA?
We appointed a bunch of them.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay.
I wanna make sure they knew.
Okay. The DDA points their own chair. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
I'm abstaining.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion pass. Uh, the SMUA, South Water Municipal Utility Authority, God, I still say we should've done CIA. SMUA. Um, we have to appoint a trustee and an alternate, and we have before the, the board to reappoint John DeBoyer as the trustee and the alternate to, uh, it would be Lance Sertie.
I'll make a motion to approve to the SMUA to appoint John DeBoyer from November twentieth twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth twenty twenty-six, and alternate Lance Sertie from November twentieth twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, next, we have property transfer, Harrison's Island Lions, and I'm gonna make the, the motion to postpone this. Um, talking to the attorney and everything, she had a few issues with, simple issues with maintenance of, of the, of the, um, septic field. I didn't think there was an issue, but I didn't wanna go against our attorney's, uh, thing, and truthfully, I don't know what, I don't understand, it's a twenty-foot wide piece of lot, it's basically a driveway, nothing can ever be built on it. When, when the, whoever set that up a long time ago, they had the fire station, it was, um, that Clay owns, and they should've, the, the border from the fire station is only two feet off the, uh, building from the side, and only about ten, twelve feet off the back. But this is another piece of property on the other side of, of the, um, of the lot, and basically it's a driveway, but the Vange Alliance has been getting, since this is a driveway, Clay Thompson's been actually maintaining the driveway, and now, once we give it to them, you know, they would have to maintain it themselves. Um, it's really not worth a whole bunch of time or, or discussion, so I, I'm gonna make the motion that we postpone this and they can take it up at the next meeting.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion?
I think they've been waiting four years for this decision, and I think it's bad that you couldn't get that, you know, nailed down, it's.
Now you want us to act.
Well, this is something that he had an agreement with you, and I don't appreciate the laughter when you don't know the background.
Did you?
Yes, I do, and Mr. Whitey Simon came up here and explained it.
The original agreement, we were gonna swap land in the back, and we were gonna put our own septic field in the back. But the health department said, no, you, there's not enough room for it. So then, we made a deal where they, they would tie in, we would just tie in to.
The Lions' system.
Yes.
And you agreed to give them this property.
Yes, but.
For that, and you haven't done it for four years.
But they wanted us to, uh, pay for, uh, garbage removal for the whole time on the deed, and that, that's not a good, good thing, so they, they just removed that. So, yes, I, I'm making a motion to postpone it.
Right, well, I mean, you.
I'm sure you can handle it next meeting.
You gave, you gave a good faith, but you're the one that made the deal, and we don't know the specifics of it.
Well, I just told you.
You made the deal.
Motion and support.
We have motion and support?
We do.
Okay, all in favor of postponement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Nay.
All right, next, uh, we have revenue replacement, um, discussion. We have approximately two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that's unallocated in our ARPA money. Now, and the next board can change this, I just wanna make sure it gets allocated, uh, before the end of the year, otherwise we lose it. And, uh, this particular, we could, we could, uh, allocate it for revenue replacement, and originally we were going to do, uh, give a hundred and fifty thousand more dollars to the, um, water department for, uh, suction.
Back truck.
Back truck, and that fell through, and, uh, police got the least of all, all the other departments. Um, so what I wanted to do is allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the water department, um, for revenue replacement, and we could just pick for meter parts, right?
Yep, we just purchased a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of one-inch meters on ten-one.
Okay.
So we had budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the back truck, so we can say that we're using revenue replacement of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into Fund five ninety-one for one-inch meters that were purchased in October.
And then, police, we're gonna do eighty-eight thousand plus the balance, whatever balance is left over, 'cause there'll be some interest money and everything else. Uh, same type of thing for revenue replacement. Eighty-eight thousand, and then whatever the balance is.
So plus interest?
Plus interest.
Well, the, the, okay, so the intra, when you're reporting for the ARPA funds, you're not reporting on interest, so we received a letter on November thirteenth saying that we had eight hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents of unobligated funds, because it gets reported once a year in April. So we already had our ARPA workshop where we approved a bunch of projects, and a bunch of them are done already, but a few for the police and a few for the fire, or the water department were not done. So we can say that the balance approximately ninety-five thousand dollars is what I figured, could be revenue replacement for Fund two oh seven, and it would cover forty-three thousand dollars, Clay's half of the school resource officer wages, and the balance for patrol wages, and then that puts the money into the budgets, it obligates the fund for the township so that we do not have to.
Forfeit.
Forfeit two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, right?
Yeah.
Whatever the leftover is going to the police.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion?
Well, you know, we had almost a million, this is, this is twenty-five percent of it. We all sat down in a meeting and talked about different options, we were able to bring our own ideas, none of that was offered, so I don't know, the new board's probably gonna wanna undo it, I think it's something that.
That's fine.
You should just let them know and let them do.
Well, I wanna make sure the ball's not dropped.
Well, I don't think that the new board is gonna allow two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to.
I wanna make sure, so.
Okay, all right.
I'll allocate it.
Go ahead, Artie.
If the board wants to change it, they're more than happy to.
Okay.
Trustee Bory, it has to be designated before year's end, so that only, that only leaves you two meetings to get that done? So if you wanna undo that as a, a board trustee, like, you have that option still, that's still available to you, right?
I know, and it can be a special meeting.
But if we don't do it right now, then the whole community would suffer.
Right.
So we have to earmark it for something, right? So that's all we're doing is we're earmarking it.
Okay.
Allocating the funds.
We're earmarking it for the ARPA meeting that we had, that you mentioned, uh, as far as.
Yeah, we had a special meeting, right?
Yeah, I haven't got a problem with it, I mean, it's, uh, it's something we should do, let's do it now, so we make sure we got it. Anything can happen.
We have diligently watched over these funds, and I'm not gonna have the township losing on my watch.
Exactly.
Okay, we have motion and support, right?
We do.
Roll call, please.
Oh, boy, where are we? Maureen Bory. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes. The motion passes. Phew, long meeting. Board member comments? Cindy?
I do not have any comments.
John?
So I'd like to thank Tom Cozel, Ms. Parcell, Cindy Babish, Leah Bacon, Kim Randall, um, and congratulations to Bev Rose, thank all those people for their service to the township. Um, and Bev Rose, I hope you enjoy your retirement, she was, um, a big asset over there, they're gonna miss her. Um, and I just wanted to say thank you to this board, I know I was only here for a year or so, a little over a year, um, but I feel like we got a lot accomplished, and I thank this whole board for their service to the township.
Thank you. Maureen?
Same thing, thank you to the people who served, especially Bev Rose, thirty years, wow, um, also thank you Deanna Lorenz for the pickleball rack, we, uh, I'm sure everyone's gonna enjoy that. Um, is the, I, I emailed you, but I didn't hear back, is this room gonna be available tomorrow? Okay, tomorrow, the new, uh, many of the newly elected officials will be sworn in here at four P M. by Judge Holowitz, if you'd like to join, and happy Thanksgiving.
Mark?
Okay, um, I'd like to thank everyone that resigned. Thank them for their services, uh, appreciate everything that you've done. Um, I wanna thank the public for my, uh, ten year here, eight years, and moving forward for another four, and I thank you for your confidence, and happy Thanksgiving.
Chris?
Yeah. I'll read quick. I'd like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the residents of Clay Township for allowing me to serve our community as a township trustee for two consecutive terms. When I began my public service, our community was recovering from an embezzlement scandal, the fire department was in disarray, and our township amenities were in dire need of improvement. Since then, our township board has made the, managed to right the ship, making some difficult decisions, working hard, and putting the needs of residents at the forefront. As of June thirtieth twenty twenty-four, our general fund balance was just over three point one million dollars. This is a number that all the residents of Clay Township should be aware of. Be aware of it to monitor and ensure that the public funds are being spent wisely. Our Dun &amp; Bradstreet rating is a triple A. Generally speaking, a higher credit rating would lead to a more favorable effect on the marketability of the bond. In other words, with huge, huge projects on the forefront, the cost of potentially borrowing money would be less. I'd like to thank our clerk, Cindy Valentine, who's been a friend and mentor. Among other things, Cindy has made continuous improvements to her department, benefiting the entire community. These improvements include no hardware and software to support fair elections, increasing the number of poll workers, sending out more absentee ballots each and every year, administering nine days of early voting, and successfully running more than ten elections at two different polling sites during my terms in office. Thank you, Cindy Valentine, for your dedication to the township. I'd also like to thank Janet Garaga, our deputy clerk, for all of her hard work in assisting the clerk in running a challenging and evolving election process. Your devotion to our township is a blessing, and I wish you much, much success in your position. Township treasurer has successfully allocated funds and balanced budgets for over seven years. She's improved our Dun &amp; Brad, Bradstreet rating, she's increased our fund balance, consolidated historic debt, and safely invested individual account balances yielding, yielding substantial growth for future project needs. Christina Hiltonan has gone above and beyond her duties as treasurer to secure our township financial interests for years to come. I would also like to thank our deputy treasurer, Anita Zepa, for all of her hard work and dedication to the community. Our supervisor, Artie Bryson, has a terrific leader and a strong supporter of Clay Township at the local, county, state, and federal levels. He has written grants and advocated for our community, bringing in more than twelve million dollars in my terms of office. Artie's been a mentor, a friend, and a solid leader during the eight years I've worked with him. I want you to know that I appreciate everything you've given this township. Clay Township is in a financial, it's financially in a better place, and we have more resources and a growing list of amenities because of your efforts. To the professional ladies at our township office, I thank you for making this township a better place. We have a tremendous team that works very hard to service the needs of our residents. With two certified assessors, an outstanding building department, and an office staff that always work to ensure the township's needs are put ahead of, um, are put at the forefront, and our township office is run like a weld oil machine. This is due to the professionalism and good-natured personnel putting in the hard work every day. They are the faces of the township, and I'm grateful to each and every one of them. Clay Township Police Department is the rock of this community, it's led by Chief Mike Coach and supported by his command staff, including William Cope, Stephen Stockwell, Mike Brocklin, Sergeant Smith. I've made many friends along my eight-year journey, appreciate the dedication and hard work of this police department, they, they put in to keep, to keep us and this community safe. The fire department is under. The Fire Department is under good leadership with George Rose. Chief has increased the number of firefighters. He's petitioned for new equipment, including new fire trucks, new pumper trucks, new turnout gear, and countless other life-saving hardware used to increase the community's safety. Chief Rose has staffed and operated two fire departments for a number of years and consistently looks for ways to improve the fire department services. As residents, we hope the fire department never has to show up to our homes, but if they do, know that they'll come in with the best gear available to do the right job. Lastly, to my friends at the DPW, thank you for continuing, continuously picking up the township's slack. Lance Sertie and his staff are always willing to put in the effort necessary to get the job done right, whether that means cutting grass, maintaining the splash pad, maintaining the township park, running water taps, repairing water main breaks. Lance and his crew are always up to assisting in maintaining the township infrastructure. As we grow, our list of problems also grows. Thank you to the entire DPW for the difficult job keeping our township infrastructure running smoothly. To the newly formed board, I have three suggestions. One, pick up a copy of Robert's Rules, Rules of Order. It's a guide to help me, and hopefully will assist you in running a productive and orderly meeting. Two, attend the Michigan Township Trustees Association, the Michigan Township Association training sessions, and stay informed and educated on best practices. And three, always remember to put the needs of our residents first. I have enjoyed my duties as township trustee. I wish the board great success and encourage them unto relying on the experience and knowledge of trustees Mark Bouchard and John DeBoyer. They will help show you the path forward, a path that benefits the entire community and all residents of beautiful Clay Township. That's it.
Drop the mic. Kristi?
Thank you, Clay Township. It has been my honor to serve.
I didn't write a speech, and I just wanna tell everyone it's been a true honor to be your supervisor. In this journey, I made lots and lots of friends. I really wanna thank all the employees for the township. They, uh, they're here for more than just a paycheck. They, they are here for our community, and it has been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you. And I mean that for the girls in the office, you know, the police, uh, water, fire, everybody. It's without, without their commitment, it would be hard for us to do our job and, and to make things happen in a productive way. See, 12 years, that's a long time. I, I see a lot of great improvements, I believe, in those 12 years. Uh, when I first got in the office, Don, you'd like this, where there was actually a lawsuit between Elginak and Clay. And, uh, I think right away, I got, got involved, and we got it figured out without going to court. And, uh, ever since then, uh, it's been a pretty, pretty good relationship. Like I said, we, inside our office, there was embezzlement going on. We took care of that real quick, and we put in the proper processes and procedures, so it cannot happen again. You saw that, that list from the auditor with all the weaknesses. Literally, there are six to eight of them every year. And that's just how it's done. You know, no, and we got rid of them all. I'm very proud of that. Think when I took office, our fund balance for our general fund, it was either just above or below $1 million. I'm leaving you with over $3 million. Last two years, we put over 300 grand in our fund balance without raising taxes for our general fund. In fact, they go down a little bit with the Headley Amendment. So, we found better ways and more efficient ways to get the job done. And I'm proud of that, and I, I gotta give a lot of, a lot of thanks to our department heads and our employees for that, so... Other than that, it's been an honor, and God bless Clay Township. Motion to adjourn?